Hello, everyone. Thanks for being here today. This is our regular work session. We're going to start with a customer service improvements update. And Tanze, you'll be kicking this off.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Tanze here, Deputy City Manager. And I'm filling in here for Pat Young. We're thinking of Pat at home not feeling well. And I am a poor substitute for what would have been a really great introduction from Pat. So, Pat, we're thinking about you. He'll be watching right now. So, we have gotten some questions from council members just about customer service metrics and performance across some of our customer service functions in our Planning and Development Department. So, we thought this was a great opportunity to take a step back and provide a customer service overview on the broader department. So, you're going to be hearing from a lot of our great staff in Planning and Development today, Jason Ruff, Karen Ray, Brittany Waddell, about the great work that they and their staff have been doing. So, as a council, you probably remembers, a little more than two years ago, we did a pretty significant reorganization of our planning and development functions, created some new divisions, one completely focused on cultivating more of a culture and strength in customer service. And Pat, his two-year anniversary with the City of Raleigh will actually be next month, July 20. So, he's been with the organization about two years. And when he came to us, he brought his own personal commitment and passion for customer service. And hopefully, you'll hear that in the work that his staff has done. So, the department has revisited its mission, which is to provide timely, predictable, equitable, and customer-oriented services in the area of policy development, compliance, long-term planning, design services, and real estate that support the future growth of Raleigh. You're going to hear, actually focus on almost each one of those areas. We had hoped to do an update on enhancements that we're also making in what we're calling our Urban Projects Group, which is a rebranding and consolidation of some functions similar to the Urban Design Center. Unfortunately, we're going to have to reschedule that today. So, our thoughts are also with Ken Bowers, who is not feeling well today, too. So, you'll be hearing some more about that when we're able to bring that presentation up. So, here is that org chart and depicts that reorganization we talked a lot about a couple of years ago and now has come into greater clarity with ongoing work and that, again, additional work that has happened to bring together that Urban Projects Group, which will consolidate real estate, our Urban Design Center, and project advocacy. And Ken Bowers will be bringing some of his really unique, both public and private, experience to lead that group. So, here is that broader group. Again, today, you will be hearing from Jason, from Karen, and from Brittany on the great work that they and their teams have been doing. So, with that, I'm going to introduce Jason Ruff, who is relatively new to his role and is doing an amazing job.
Thank you, Tanze, Mayor, Council. I appreciate the opportunity for us to come to you today and share some information about some aspects of our department that maybe are a little unseen compared to some of the ones that you see more regularly. So, feel free to ask questions as we present this. And hopefully, we will have some things that are enlightening to you. So, I'm representing the Building and Safety Division. And primarily, there's three things that we perform in that division of our department. And that is the plan review aspects for building and trades reviews. We do the field inspections for building and trades. And we do code compliance, which involves stop work orders, NOVs, complaints, investigations, things like that. This is a little closer look at what our division looks like, at least the management that report to me directly. And you can see represented there the three different aspects that I talked about. So, we have commercial plan review. We have residential plan review. We have our chief building official, who is responsible for all of our field inspections. And then, for the commercial side, and then we have a residential chief that handles our inspections from the residential side, residential being one and two family dwellings. You see also represented the number of full-time employees that are attributed to each of those subgroups. So, before I get into some of the numbers and metrics, I wanted to highlight some things that we feel like are really wins that we've done that were a little bit outside of the normal operations that we feel like have had large impacts to our community, to the development community, and that were worth highlighting today. One of those is our remote inspections. Many of you may have become familiar with that. This was brought to the forefront during the height of COVID. So, when we had to respond to COVID and figure out a way that we were still going to conduct our inspections and allow development to not be stopped, we utilized something that the state had, really was in its infancy, but they had set forth some programs called remote inspections. We took advantage of that. I think we were very successful. We've even been, you know, highlighted as some of the more successful programs. We use some of our training materials throughout the state so that other jurisdictions can look at how we did those things. This is some of the information. When we do a remote inspection, essentially, our field staff can communicate virtually with a contractor or a homeowner. They're on site. Our inspector is remote. And we give them directions and we can inspect things essentially virtually from somewhere else. We do have some numbers where, at the height of COVID, that was, it was a very, very popular thing. We had branched out and we were doing that with really most all of the inspection types that were available. One thing that we have seen, as we've sort of resumed a more normal development process, the request for remote inspections has retracted. So, we're doing really a lesser percentage of those. But we do still have those and we have those as an option. And that's not something that, we've not implemented any changes that have lessened those. We've just seen a lesser request of that. But moving forward, that's one of the things that we intend to try to champion out in front of others and really promote that because we think there's a lot of efficiency gains that we can have there. And it is very convenient for the industry. So, you know, we look forward to developing that a little better. Another program that we have within our division is what we call a special projects team. This is where we've designated, we have seven of our senior-level inspectors. The more, they have the most experience. They have the most qualifications. And we've dedicated them to what we consider would be a special project. Those could be high-rise projects. They could be high-profile. They could be very technically challenging. And what that allows us to do is really designate a senior inspector to be more hands-on with those projects. Their schedule is a lot more flexible. They're able to attend pre-construction meetings. They're a little bit more on-call for the contractors. And we've got a lot of really positive feedback from our larger developers in the success of that program. So, we started off with a single team, which consisted of one building, one electrical, one plumbing, and one mechanical inspector each. There was four of those. And we've had such success and we've now expanded that to seven inspectors. So, essentially, we're almost to two complete teams handling those special projects. It just gives increased availability and responsiveness to those projects where the timeliness really is important. So, another matter that we've really done this for a number of years now. I think we're, this was maybe our 10th or 12th year of doing Building Safety Month. The city was recognizing that even well prior to my coming on to the city. But this is a, it's really an internationally recognized initiative that May is Building Safety Month. The International Code Council always puts out these topics. And we appreciate your support every year annually in supporting that, sending out the proclamation and allowing us to do this public outreach. Some of the things that we did this year are highlighted here. We did, we had a presence at the Moore Square Market where we set up tents. We had staff available. We answered a lot of questions just from the general public. We, it was a very informal way for the public to approach staff and ask questions. We did weekly tours of the Wilders Grove Solid Waste Facility out there. Every Friday, they did some tours of that, highlighting some of the special things that were incorporated when that facility was built. And similarly, we also did tours of Abbott's Creek and the Chavis Facility. So, along with that, and then there was a lot of social media outreach and materials that we created that we put out there. And it's just, it's a great way for us to engage with the community every year in a specially designated month so that they can see, you know, just how important it is and what the city puts priority in for our building safety efforts. So, the next program that is still really ongoing and we're really proud of, I think it's, it has been a success and will continue to prove to be something very worthwhile and highlighting. Planning, the Planning Department certainly sort of got this kicked off and spearheaded this. We know that your priority has been for ADUs. It's definitely something that's very recognizable. We're getting a lot of inquiries from the citizens. So, we've developed what was called a Fast Track ADU Program, where we went out with an open call to local designers. And we solicited them to send us, if they were interested, they could send us designs that they would like for us to prescreen, pre-review ahead of time so that essentially those designs would be more readily available for the customers to buy for several things, at a reduced rate from the designer. And with that being prescreened, the city was willing to promise them a three-day turnaround time on those ADU plans. So, when those ADU plans make it to the website, and I'll explain where we are in the process, then a customer selects that plan. They submit that. And they should have a very, a much quicker path to permits than what we see with some of the unique designs. So, there were 50 submittals received during that open call. There was a jury of five that was convened that were outside the city. The city staff did not have any involvement in the jury. So, the jury was selected. They met. They watched the deliberations, great deliberations. There was 10 to 12 designs that were identified to move forward through the prescreening process. We had set that number at 10 arbitrarily, just to see what the response was. There were a few designs that came in that were some alternate construction methods, such as container homes and things, that posed a little bit more challenges to getting prescreened through standard building codes. But we're still going to recognize those. So, we have those 10 or 12 designs identified. Those designers have been notified. We are now waiting on them to submit their complete package for us to do our review. We expect middle of July to have those packages back in hand. And I would anticipate that puts us on an August timeframe for having these prescreened ADUs available somewhere in that August timeframe, available online. So, again, that's been an exciting process. I do think that it's something that the city's looking at repeating annually. I think if this is a success, we could try to do an open call and add to that as it moves forward. So, some other things that we're looking at as we try to evolve our process is some technology advancements that we feel like we can implement, both in the office and in the field. So, one of the things that is very important for us is that our field staff have the equipment that they need out there so that they can, you know, view plans. Now, all the plans that we get are coming in digitally. So, we're looking at enhancing our hardware that we have so that they can carry those, carry a tablet or carry a device with them on the job site. They can see the plans in front of them. There is a lot more interaction if they can do immediate markups on the plans. The contractors can see what those markups are. And also, their inspection deliveries, so they can actually perform their inspections, enter the results, and you can almost get a real-time response rather than having to wait for a delay and it has to go through the portal. So, we've really explored several options on what that looks like. We're in the process of some hardware procurement right now for that and some software application upgrades. And one last thing to note there is, in addition to that, that real-time inspections results entry, we're also looking at what applications are available, where we can send out emails and text communications to the contractors or the homeowners who would like to be notified in a timely manner. Right now, they have to go and log in to find those results. So, it's just, it's just another way that we see that there are possibilities for us to communicate in a more timely manner and have better communications, which leads to the efficiencies that we're looking for. So, after that, I will kind of move into, these are some of the metrics that gives you an idea of what we do within our division. So, our plan review group, and when I speak of plan reviews, I'm talking about commercial building, residential building, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical. So, those are the trades. Those are the state building codes that we adopt and that we enforce. And so, our division reviews for compliance within all of those specific codes. And we average, right now, we're averaging about 1,500 plan reviews per month. And you see here, the numbers, we're about 96.4% on-time delivery, meaning that we get those out within what our published benchmarks are, or our established benchmarks. You know, we do look at the national average of being 85%. So, proud to say that we're definitely well above that. I would highlight, though, that the next column below shows our percent vacancy, which is, without, goes without saying, is definitely our largest challenge right now within our group, is our continued vacancies. So, the fact that we're still meeting those benchmarks with that vacancy, that number has decreased somewhat, you know, during, when we're more fully staffed, we can really have those turned around in a 98, 99% timeframe. So, we are seeing some dips in that and we are...
Question, Madam Mayor. Is that percent vacancy, on what average? I mean, is that...
So, that's within the review group itself. So, I've broken it down per group. So, we have 16 full-time employees for plan reviews. And we have four vacancies currently out of the 16.
So, that's current, not, I mean, that's not like an average over a month or a year of the past year?
It is current today, but unfortunately, that has been about the average for the past 18 months or so. It's stayed that way. Those jobs prove to be very difficult to recruit. We usually wind up advertising those months on end repeatedly until we can just get candidates. We have had some retirements, so there have been new staff come on board, but then we've lost some. So, the number kind of tends to stay around that range. But that is a current number as of right now.
All right. Thank you.
And similarly, the...
Excuse me. Mayor, can I get one in here, too? Thank you. Do you know what period of time this data covers?
So, this is first quarter of 2022 is what we looked at. This is January to March was our latest metrics, you know, and we kind of built this off of that. It doesn't fluctuate much from that if you look at a larger scale or at different quarters. We do track those quarterly and we present those in a senior staff meeting. And the numbers tend to track the same. If you break it down month by month, you do see ebbs and flows, spikes, as you do with the construction industry. But that is first quarter of 2022. Similarly, the next column over is our inspections group. That is our field inspections. They're looking at the same codes, residential code, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, and the commercial building. We conduct, we average month-to-month, 9,000 to 10,000 inspections. So, I think, and I have some of the numbers, like for calendar year 2021, we had 118,000 inspections. So, that tracks out to really about 9,800 a month, I think was what we averaged last year. We have, again, those, we're pretty good on time with that. And when on time there means the next day from when it's requested. So, if you request an inspection today, you're on tomorrow's schedule. So, 98-plus percent of the time, we're able to respond the next day. The other percentages of that get rolled to either a second or a third day. So, numbers are still good there. Similarly, we've got 11, that 11 full-time, that's vacancies. So, that's 11 out of 40. So, we have 40 inspectors between those five, residential, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, and building. And we are 11 vacant in that. So, similarly, that's pretty much over the first quarter of this year. But that number, that number has gone up a little bit. In mid-year 2021 and end of 2022, we had a number of retirements that happened at the end of the calendar year of 2021. So, similarly there, too, we really are struggling to recruit those. We advertise and interview and make offers and, you know, try to recruit. But the labor market's tough. All other jurisdictions are hiring similarly. So, you know, and I'm going to kind of close up here with some of the things that we're trying to do to address those. So, my last slide is things that we're looking at for recruitment and retention of those vacancies that are there. So, starting off, we are encouraging our staff to get additional certifications. So, some of those inspectors that I referenced maybe just do electrical inspections or they just do plumbing inspections. We have a program that the city's had in place for some time where they can get certification pay if they get additional certifications. And that makes them a lot more nimble and flexible. And we can shift work between groups and we're a lot less siloed as a group that way. So, we encourage that. We incentivize that with a certification pay program. And that being said, you know, we are willing to support them with travel and training dollars to take the classes and the course tests and things that it takes to do that. So, we've just really doubled down on our effort. We've reminded our staff of the availability of that for the city to help support them get additional certifications. And it makes us able to respond when we have vacancies in one group more so than the other. So, increased parking availability, that's something. So, our inspectors don't report to an office each day. Our inspectors work out of their vehicle, so they're mobile. And we have parking throughout the city. And our inspectors are assigned to geographical areas. So, they report to their vehicle there and they have their workload in front of them on their computer. And so, what we found was that we had inspectors that were assigned in areas where their commute was, you know, it was a little bit unreasonable. Maybe they're coming in from the south and we've got them reporting all the way to the north end of the city. So, we really kind of put all the cards on the table. We looked at ways we could reassign areas. We could get folks parking a lot closer to where they commute in, so their commute was a lot less. And they're in their vehicle quicker. They're able to respond and be a lot more efficient in there daily. But there's a lot less travel time across the city and things for them to do their work. And it's been well-received by the staff, too, because it's less drive time for them to get to where they're going to go to start their work. And I will, great kudos to the Parks and Rec because they were very cooperative in opening up a lot of more options for us to have parking. So, prior to that, we were actually even using some private parking on some private facilities where we had agreements. We even had some parking leases. So, we backed off of that and we decided we would leverage city facilities, but that made the most sense. And so, we've come to a great partnership with the Parks Group for allowing us to park our vehicles there. Overtime, overtime pay was something... Oh, I'm sorry. Sure.
Quick question about the vehicles. Do the inspectors share vehicles?
They do not share vehicles.
Okay. So, they all have their own assigned vehicle?
They do, yes.
Okay.
And that's, and that's really an operational benefit just because they each have their own assigned workload. And so, they really are sent out each day with their own list of things to do. They each need to go kind of to their own, their own assigned work.
And they park their vehicles at a city park when they're done a day?
Their private vehicle there, get in their city vehicle and conduct their work, yes.
Okay. How far out do your inspectors drive from in order to meet? Like, how far out of Wake County?
Yeah. So, they don't, we don't, we don't currently allow them to take their personal vehicle. But so, recently, as a second effort, and I haven't put that here because it's still very, very early, but we've, I've started gathering that data to see just how far our inspectors commuting. And what I've found out, out of the 40 inspectors that we have just this week, it looks like we're averaging about 17-mile commute. If, you know, there's some that are 38-mile commute and then there's some that are a three-mile commute. But over the average of all of the group, I think it was coming out to about a 19-mile average commute. So, you know, we had talked about and considering whether or not, you know, take-home vehicles would be something that would be, that the city would be cooperative in as just another soft benefit because a lot of other jurisdictions do that. That is something that's very common in our industry. It's not something that we've done here, but a lot of other jurisdictions are doing that. And when it comes to recruitment, a lot of those soft things are really what's mattering right now, it seems. Is that the question?
Yeah. We'll let the city manager and attorney figure all that out.
But I hope that answers your question. We are trying to track that data to see what that looks like. The last thing there I'll talk about is just overtime pay. So, we did have a lot of lapped salary money there because of the vacancies. And the, even though we have vacancies, the work volume is really as high as it's ever been. It's unprecedented. And we're having to get that done. So, we have not made it mandatory, but we have made voluntary overtime for staff that would like to take advantage of that. And that's helped. That's helped keep us, that's really why some of those percentages are still high because we've got a lot of staff that are leveraging some overtime. It's not, it's not exorbitant and our fiscal manager is keeping a very close eye on that because we don't want to just open a blank check for folks to work. But, and we don't want them to burn out, either. So, it's been a really delicate balance of how can we get the work done and still take care of our staff and be mindful of them. So, and then, we're utilizing the telework options up to what the city policy will allow. So, most of our plan reviewers are at a 50% telework right now. So, they're 50% in the office, 50% teleworking. And that, you know, that is certainly very beneficial to them. It's something that we hear a lot of compliments about. It's something that they really, really appreciate. And oddly enough, there are some metrics and I don't have them here. We could go into it. But our efficiencies and our timeliness actually improved pretty significantly when we were fully remote during the COVID timeline. And we've all talked about what some of those reasons would have been. So, we're using telework to the limit of what the policy will allow right now. And if there's no other questions, that is it for me and I will hand it off to Brittany Waddell.
Councilmember Melton?
I have a couple. And some of this may actually be for the city manager. But I'm really excited about the ADU Fast Track Program. I actually already had someone email me asking when the plans are going to be available. And I forwarded that along, I think, to Mr. Young. But I think, you know, what we're starting to see is we've done a lot of text change and zoning reform. And now, we're moving into how do we actually get some of it out into the, on the ground. And so, this is a good first step. But I'm wondering if there's a way looking into next year and next year's budget to think even bigger. Like, I've seen some stuff in other cities where they provide like grants or low-interest loans for folks that'll build an ADU and then make it available as a rental or an affordable rental. I don't know how we would really monitor that or if the structure here would work. But for that, but I think some, thinking big about, now we've got the plans and then for folks that may have a financial burden but could build one and add it to the housing supply, I think that would be fantastic. And then, speaking of all the text changes we've done for zoning reform, we've been really trying to address housing affordability and reducing the cost of housing by increasing supply and different housing choice. But this work, too, I think, really directly affects the cost of housing, the amount of time it takes to get through the process. And so, I'm really encouraged by a lot of the things you're focusing on. But, um, I guess a couple of questions, and this may be for later in the presentation. But how often are we getting feedback from the folks who are engaging with the current system for ways to improve it? Cause I think that may be helpful. You know, we probably all get pinged by people, and we usually only hear when they have a complaint, like, why is this taking so long or that taking so long? So kinda getting ahead of that and incorporating that feedback in, I think, would be good. And if this is a premature question, I'm happy to ask it later. And then the other question I have is with the telework. One thing I did, someone contacted me recently, was like, why are people not back in the office when we call to get our permits? We're looked at, it's, no one answers the phone. Like, when they work from home, is there still a way for that, those folks to be accessible to the public whose cases they're working on? And if so, can we just make sure that that gets out if it's not already out?
Sure. I'll, I'll try to address, uh, some of those. So I think, back to the ADU point, I think that a great first step, and I'm, and I'm excited in some of this thing, these things that we're doing now, remove some of those initial upfront barriers to getting them built. So, you know, getting them, get, getting these things permitted and built and on the ground is the first step. And then certainly, that makes them available, and then you could, you could explore those other options there. So, I think that, you know, expedited reviews, like what we're promising here is, is, is a great way. The communications team just, just recently revamped the entire ADU webpage to try to make that a lot more user-friendly. We realized when we stood that up initially, when the text change first happened, we, we put it out there, and now we've gone back through, and now that, now that the process has been ongoing, we see where we could make some changes. So, so I think putting resources out for the public so that we can eliminate a lot of those upfront questions, which kind of streamlines it because there's less back and forth. So, so those things, I think, are happening, um, in a positive way, and, and certainly some of the others could, could talk about that. The, um, the telework option, so essentially, the reviewers themselves, um, can and, and should take direct phone calls, and, you know, when they're, when they're working remotely, you know, they're, they're required, their expectations is clearly communicated that they're available, that they communicate in a very timely manner. We address those when we find out very specifics, and if we think that those are, are not happening. I'm not, I've, I've, thankfully, I've not heard very much of that within the group that I manage between the building and the trades. I'm not sure about some of the other matrix groups and all. I'm just, I just don't, don't have visibility on that. And then certainly when calls come through the call center, and I'll let Karen talk about that piece, because she manages the call center. So when they call the general number and they get the automated system, that's supposed to function well and, and get, get them to reviewers as they, as they need to. And then what was the third one? I apologize. I've tried to...
I think that was the gist of it, and I understand that everyone sort of has their own department or part of the, of the process that they own, and I don't exactly know where a lot of my questions fit, so I figured I would just throw some of them out, and then maybe if anybody else can answer when they come up, just kinda pick it up. But that was helpful. Thank you.
I think the other question related to, do we get feedback? And so that would be our development services, um, group, and not sure who can address that, but...
Yeah, we don't have to go out of order, just when it comes up, like, if we could talk about that.
Well, I, I'll add a little bit to that, if, if, if I may. So, um, the Wake County Home Builders Association has a quarterly meeting where they, they invite all of their members in, and, um, so I were representative, typically I'm there, and, and several other of our staff. We go to those quarterly meetings. We're there, we present, we hear the, their feedback. Um, also, I've reached out to Suzanne Harris, which many of you may know, and, and really tried to open that communication with her and say, hey, if we need to have a monthly meeting, if we can get a list of the concerns that your members are bringing to you, because sometimes those get lost in translation. And, um, I think if we, and, and that's, that's just very recent where we've started that engagement. We've always been engaged, but we're trying to really ramp that up. The three assistant directors that are represented here today, we've actually carved out time on our calendar where we sit and talk about that, uh, regularly, so that we can have those, uh, those challenges in front of us and, and try to address them, so. Thanks.
Councilmember Fort?
A different question. So I hear what you're saying is relates to, um, the folks who are doing the development, but, uh, I do know there are some, you know, community partners as well who have meetings, and sometimes they're, they struggle to find the information on the website or the portal about plans that they may wanna discuss at their community meetings. So have you been getting some of that feedback from the community as well?
Yeah, I think I'll defer that to them, because I, I get more on the technical side. Once the permits are issued and they're building things, that's, that's typically where we are, but, uh, I think Brittany probably can help, so.
Do your presentation first, Brittany, and then we can talk about that.
Well, since you asked, I can go ahead and jump into that question. I'm Brittany Waddell. I oversee zoning administration and land development. So, uh, specific to questions and, and comments that we get from the community, we do get regular requests, um, to our, um, planning department for folks to come to various meetings that are ongoing, um, organizations, and sometimes individuals who see something happening in their neighborhood, and they want someone to come on site and talk to them. So we do field those kinds of questions and try to make sure the staff's available to, um, to provide them with information. So that is something that we routinely do. But I'll talk a little bit about some of the things that, um, Jay, Jason alluded to, and some of the questions you guys had, as I go through my presentation. As I mentioned, Brittany Waddell, um, I'm going to take you through some of the improvements related to zoning administration and land development. So, I will note that zoning administration slash code enforcement, um, has fourteen employees that manage the drafting, the maintenance and the enforcement of the Unified Development Ordinance, or the UDO. Land development has eighteen employees, um, working to regulate and inform the development processes through plan review and zoning permitting. Zoning administration is a team that you most often see in this forum. They appear regularly at council, um, to discuss proposed text changes to the UDO. For that reason, I won't spend a lot of time on that group. However, I did wanna, uh, acknowledge the tremendous amount of work that comes through that work group. Um, what you see here are the approved text changes throughout the last two years, um, listed by their year of orig- uh, origination. I will note, um, that the text change process can be lengthy, and text changes, um, are often not approved in the year in which they are authorized, as you well know. Nineteen text changes authorized in twenty twenty have been since approved. And on this slide, twelve text changes authorized in twenty twenty-one have been approved.
And we just wanna say we're very sorry about that.
Yes. Thank you for the job, security, and my staff. Thank you. So finally, on this slide, I just wanted to note the text changes are currently being reviewed in our, these are the ones currently under review in our public processes. This means that they're currently available on our text change portal, which I'll talk about shortly. And they're being, or, or they're being considered, um, right now by the planning commission, or being prepared for, for review by this council. The slide also shows text changes that remain in the research phase, which can be prolonged depending on the complex, the complexity of the actual changes to our code. I wanna spend a little bit of time talking about, um, this slide, a little more time. Specific to customer service improvements, staff have, and eve, this was even before the start of the pandemic, recognized the need for additional online engagement related to the text change process. And given that, staff developed a text change portal, which went live in May of twenty twenty. It is now a formal step in our text change review and approval process. And all text changes are posted to this portal to allow for external review, for questions and comments, and to be, uh, for responses to be provided by staff and compiled for submission to the planning commission and ultimately city council. Uh, this portal was so successful that planning and development used it as a model for similar engagement portals for our rezoning and our comprehensive planning processes. In addition to the portal engagement, staff, um, have added, uh, Ask a Planner sessions, which allow for in-person, I use air quotes, and right now occurring virtually mostly, um, conversations with staff members. And this is to discuss proposed changes to the code or projects that are currently being reviewed. And we continue to look for creative ways to provide additional resources, um, on our website and through social media, including informational videos and frequently asked questions. So each text change process has a formal outreach and communication strategy that's coordinated, um, with the Plan Dev Communication and Engagement Team. So zoning code enforcement also plays a role. I didn't wanna leave them out. Um, they play a role in our efforts to increase community engagement in our processes. Many of you may have seen one of the various notification signs that we use to inform the public of actions, uh, before our various boards and commissions. Uh, the one depicted here is our tenant notification sign, uh, which was created after the approval of TC eleven twenty, which increased the city's required public notice to include not only landowners, but also, uh, tenants as well. Enforcement staff routinely place and retrieve these and other city-required signage, um, as part of their duties. It's an action that can easily be taken for granted, but it allows for the effective implementation of the city's code changes and provides a service, uh, to our citizens. So now I'd like to talk a little bit about our land development group. Um, they get less visibility here at council. But as I noted earlier, they coordinate on the implementation and the application of the UDO to the city's development review processes. From a customer service perspective, land development has made many changes over the last couple of years to enhance our services to the public. Electronic plan and permit submissions are continually being assessed, and additional review processes incorporated. The Herculean effort to transition to virtual reviews and submissions shouldn't be taken for granted, and it didn't so, solely involve planning and development staff. It's a testament to coordination and collaboration with other matrix departments. And it's because of those partnerships that service delivery, as Jason alluded to, was able to continue and oft, and often exceed benchmarks throughout the pandemic. So electronic submissions allow us to streamline our intake process and to provide a one-stop shop for simpler zoning processes for things such as home occupations and sign permits. We strive to monitor and update the websites to ensure that development checklists and applications are accurate, accessible, and routinely evaluated for updated UDO requirements. We also evaluate the language and messaging on our websites for accessibility and readability through an equity lens. Specific to plan review, we work to reduce review times through internal assessment of our processes and engagement with external stakeholders, such as the Development Stakeholders Advisory Committee, or DSAC, who often help, uh, to identify pinch points in our processes and collaborate to help staff alleviate barriers to timely service. Workloads remain, uh, remained steady throughout the pandemic, as I mentioned, and as this slide showed, um, in from fiscal year twenty-one through the first quarter of twenty-two, land development section, um, completed twenty thousand two hundred and ninety-one reviews. To my final slides, I wanted to show you a little bit of our metrics. In fiscal year twenty-one, the development review group, uh, which handles preliminary site plan, subdivision and site permit reviews, completed their reviews within their allotted, um, times ninety-six percent of the time. Our residential and non-residential permitting group were at ninety-five percent, and our plat and non-construction permit group, which include things like recorded plats, home occupations, and zoning verifications, were hitting their benchmark only about seventy-eight percent of the time. I will note that, um, the plat review group had two vacancies during that fiscal year, and that greatly reduced, um, and impacted their performance. And then this final slide was just taking a look at the following fiscal year. You'll note that with proper staffing, uh, the numbers for the plat review group were up in, um, in the number of reviews processed, as well as the percentages of on-time reviews. There was a drop in our permit review staff. Um, that was because they were down one staff member for several months during, um, that fiscal year. And a new reviewer has been hired, and we expect those, uh, to see continued improvements. So as Jason was kind of mentioning, um, it is tough to keep folks in these groups. Um, they are moving to other municipalities, and people are going into private sector, and, um, we do struggle to stay fully staffed, and it does, it does ultimately affect our review times and sometimes our response times. But I wanted to raise that for you guys. And unless you have a question for me, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Karen Ray.
Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. I am Karen Ray. I'm one of the assistant directors over the Continuous Improvement and Customer Service Group. This is a new group. It was de- developed in twenty twenty when we re, um, I can't even think of my words, um, when they reorganized the departments. And so since that time, I've been working with this group, and we have since undergone a smaller reorganization within the customer service group, because our ultimate goal is to be able to provide timely and consistent service delivery. And I've been able to work with the staff. I've got Katie Dabrowski, who works under me, and she manages all the communications and engagement for the entire department. So the website updates, she, her group is responsible for that, and they are aggressively attacking pages where we know we have a lot of issues. And so I'll talk a little bit more about some of the changes that we're making. And with each change, her group is working on those. And then in addition, the other four managers make up our customer service center. And with all of that knowledge, that's a really great group, and we're working very hard to change the way that we deliver service. So I mentioned that we just went through a minor reorganization, and basically what we were trying to accomplish was flattening the organization so that we can move work through the system in a more reasonable manner, and make it more timely, and make sure that we're being more consistent. Previously, we had work separated by residential, non-residential, and land. What happened was it created opportunities where when we had vacancies, we could not be flexible in helping the other groups. So we would see a backup in one area where another group might be all caught up and just kind of sitting around. And so by reorganizing, we're able to cross-train all of the staff and get the work through the system a little bit quicker. One of the biggest things for this group is collaboration and continuous improvement. And so our goal in, in my group is we are kind of the glue that holds everything together. We are the point of contact for our customers. We are the ones who, when they say, nobody's returning my calls, they're pointing the finger at us, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But we have spent a bit of time working with our partner departments, our matrix departments, working on a customer bill of rights. And I actually, um, had Katie print off a few for you guys, if you wanted to get with you. And today, they actually came and they put this beautiful sign up on the wall so that our staff can't forget it. But it is really about what we expect of our customers, but more importantly, what they should expect from us, and what they can expect to receive every time they engage us. And so this is a culture change. It doesn't happen overnight, but it's something that not only are we, um, enforcing within the planning and development department, but we've asked our partner departments to also adhere to the same bill of rights in offering these, you know, offering the service in a way that's very timely and consistent. So when the pandemic started, the group went from in-person, and if you can imagine that on, um, the fourth floor of OEP, on any given day, there could be a whole bunch of people standing around waiting, waiting to turn in their paper, plans, and applications.
I'm gonna interrupt you. People listening won't know what OEP is.
Sorry, One Exchange Plaza. Sorry. And so they would stand there, and they would wait for somebody to call them and take, and process their paperwork. Well, when the pandemic happened, we couldn't do that, so everybody started emailing. And one of the best compliments that we have heard over and over and over again is that this has saved everyone in the development community so much time and money. Because instead of standing there for a couple of hours, they can send an email and be done with it and go about their business. In addition, a lot of, um, companies would hire courier services to bring us stuff, and they don't have to do that anymore. In addition, they would have development teams that they would have to bring in for meetings and pay all these people to sit around in these meetings, and they don't have to do that anymore. So by allowing us to use a technology at hand, we were able to create online appointment systems, um, which Brittany's team has also deployed, as well as the transportation department. Um, and it's been very effective in being able to offer virtual appointments for our clients and, and allow them to continue to email, so they don't have to come in. They've been very happy that they don't have to come in. That being said, there are some customers who do want to come in, and they do want to talk to us. And so to your point about people not being available, one of the things that I've found, all the complaints come to me. So one of the things that I've found in addressing all the complaints for the last couple of years, it's a great job, is that, um, nine times out of ten, when somebody says, nobody's answering my call, what's happening is they're calling, 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 calling. They're never leaving a message. They're not giving us the chance to assist them. So I try to encourage our customers when they do get to me, please leave a message. Give them the opportunity to call you back. Or email them, but understand they're working on reviews all day. They will get back to you. So when they're talking about, nobody's getting back to me, it can also sometimes not even... So when they're talking about, nobody's getting back to me, it can also sometimes not even be our department. It can be somebody in a different department. So my job and my team's job is to try to find out who it belongs to, get them to work with a customer, and make sure that the customer's been served. If not, then it's our job to make sure that, like, connect the two, whether that's a facilitated conference call or in-person or whatever. So we do work that. The question came up, I think there was a question about engagement, and how do we hear what concerns are and how do we improve the process? So we have weekly meetings for our supervisor review team, and that's everybody tied to development who's a supervisor. And then we also have a management team meeting, every all the managers tied to development. The goal is that we get together, we talk about issues, we try to figure them out. If we have complaints or we have special projects that have specific issues, we bring them to the group, we discuss them, and then we can come away with a plan. This has been very effective for us to be able to implement technology changes, process changes, and even like a project. So for example, the new civic tower, it's complicated, and there's a lot of moving pieces and parts. We can come together and say, this is what the schedule looks like. What do we need to do? And when do we need to do that? So that we can help move those projects along more efficiently. So when I get complaints about system issues, to Jason's point, we do talk to the Home Builders Association, we talk to Development Services Advisory Committee. Once a month, we have an hour-long meeting. And then every quarter, we meet with a larger development stakeholders group. We have a two-hour meeting once a month, or once every quarter. That's the opportunity for them to bring us issues, for us to investigate and come back to them with recommendations or process changes, policy changes, whatever it is that we need to do to try to effect change there. The next couple of slides are just examples of information that we provide based on their requests to both D S A C and the Stakeholders Committee. So monthly, they like to see how many vacancies we have. So this was our April quarterly update of how many planning and development vacant positions we had. They it was so that we could be very transparent. They like this information. This is the information that we provided for the matrix departments. These were the vacancies in the matrix departments that are tied directly to development. So this gives them an idea of where they can expect to see maybe a little bit of slowing or if they know that they're going to need a little bit more time with a reviewer, they take note of who's missing and how much extra time it's going to take. And they also like stats. They want the metrics. So this is an example of metric that we provide to them. And one of the things on here that you'll know is in F Y twenty, when we were physically in the office, seventy-nine percent of the time, staff was hitting their benchmark reviews. That means seventy-nine percent of the time, they were completing things when they were supposed to. Since then, we have reduced benchmarks. So we've shortened the amount of time it takes to complete things, and we're still meeting the benchmarks ninety percent of the time. And this is for all the matrix groups combined. So this is stormwater and transportation and public utility, everybody together ninety percent of the time. And so this is something that they love to see. They're very happy with this metric, although they would still like for us to be faster. Faster, faster, faster. Express reviews, this is a premium service that is delivered. And the the point with express review is to try to get projects that are a little more complex and more involved through the process a little bit quicker. There are additional charges. We reduced intentionally the number of express reviews when the pandemic started, and we've cut the express reviews in half. The intention there was to be able to reallocate the resources that were focused on express review to make sure that everybody was getting a good quality level of service in a timely manner and not just those who could afford to pay the extra. In addition to the to the calls comment, the call volume has decreased a lot in the past year, which is great. Because with that, that is an indicator to me that people are getting the information they need online. They're getting it email responses. They're able to schedule their inspections themselves. And we are in the first phase of the C R M implementation. Our department is. And so we're really looking forward to that because that's going to be allow us to get better measurements and metrics, and we can start figuring out a little bit closer where we need to pinpoint our communications and our process improvements. And then the permit portal, and Katie, thank you. She put the the address up there if you want to log on and check out the permit portal. This is how our customers can engage support with us. So a lot of the smaller permit types are available to them in the portal. We're also very pleased to say that we now have single-family homes and townhomes available for them to self-s submitted. When they are self submitting, it's taking about five days off of the intake process for them. So right out of the gate, they're getting better service. Our goal is to move everything into e-review so that they can self submit. That will create a much more timely review process for all of our customers. The portal is where you can go to pay, to make payments, to schedule inspections, to check on the status of reviews, et cetera. And if anybody would like a tutorial on the permit portal, because it is available to everyone, you don't have to have an account, and you can go in and you can search, what is my neighbor doing? Are they putting in a pool? Are they putting in a deck? I can go and look and see what they're doing. And that is all I have. I know I went through that pretty quickly. So if you have any questions, maybe I answered them.
Any questions for Karen? Councilmember Bucken?
Thanks. So a couple of comments, really for everybody, and then maybe a few questions. So I'm really proud of what y'all are doing here. Organizational change is really difficult. And and it's it's even more harder in in the public sector for lots of reasons that don't matter today. But I'm really encouraged by what I'm seeing here. Applaud the efforts. All the tracking of data and this, the processes you have set up for improvement, both internally and involving external people. This is this is really exciting. So that said, things don't always go right. Sometimes things do go wrong. And and feel free to share with your, you know, if you want colleagues, because I'm not exactly sure which part of the organization this falls in, but we still get complaints. They range from, you know, I'm doing a renovation, and it's taking too long. I'm trying to trying to add a deck, you know. Can you kind of help? Put put complaints into context. Which which part of the organization are we? I mean, I'm not giving you enough detail to really answer the question, but could you maybe give some examples of problem cases and and how it was diagnosed? What part of the organization is experiencing problems? Just kind of orient me to to where people are interfacing and having problems?
Yeah, so the biggest problems I find are if I am an individual homeowner and I want to build a deck or fence, the layperson is going to be challenged with the way that we word things. And it's I I will say that because I myself have to have things explained to me. This is not my background. I did not come like with a planning or development background. And so that's something that Katie and her team are trying really hard to do is to improve the verbiage, to make things much easier to understand. We've even talked about doing some simple sessions where it can be recorded so people can go and just watch the video about how do I or how can I? Because it's it's not super simple all the time. And so when people get to get to my staff, if staff can't answer the question, if they have to reach out to somebody else, they will. I frequently get the the grandma next door who just has a question about, you know, I I don't know what to do. I've got this fence. It's falling down. What do I do? And if I can't answer, I find the right person who can. I get all of those up to, you know, we have major development, and I'll give an example, and I won't call out the development, but we have a major development that we're working on, and it's super complicated. And we have to meet regularly with different members of different departments to say, this is this issue. What can we do about it? This is this issue. What can we do about it? So that we can come to an agreement if we need to push something through faster or we need to, you know, maybe give them a heads up that they're going to need something from D O T or they're going to need something from, you know, water quality. We give them the heads up early on those kinds of things. So it's really, it's a wide range. I mean, I get people wanting to get their A B C permit, and they're like, it's stuck in the queue. What do I do? How do I get it expedited? And I go to that manager and say, hey, can you look and see what's going on here? And so we have given my staff working titles of permitting advocate. That's something we recently did because the message that we want them to hear and what we want them focused on is you are the customer's advocate. If they come to you, you have to advocate for them to get what they need. That is a culture change. That is not how it's always been. You know, we have staff who have, you know, previously had the mindset that that is not mine. I do not touch it. I hand it off. And that's literally how they've operated. So changing people's mindset on that is the biggest challenge for us. So if there is ever an issue and you're just not sure, just send it to me, because even if it belongs to transportation, yeah, I'll call them and say, hey, guys, I I've got one. I need you to help me. And either I get on the phone with them and the customer, or I hand it off to them.
You don't have to leave. I was just gonna add. So if I might add, so one one example that we hear a lot in the plan review side of things is, you know, hey, my my project's been submitted for six months. And, you know, what it's stuck. And so by the time, sometimes it even escalates to you, and then it comes back to us for us to to provide an answer. And when we go in, we actually look at the project. We may find out that the reviewer submitted comments to them in January, and then we didn't get the plan back in in our office until April or May. And so what to the what to the customer looks like a six-month window of time, we've really only had it in our hands for those small ten-day windows of review periods. So we we conducted the review. We got it out in a timely manner. There were comments that needed to be addressed, and maybe there was a lag in the time. However, when when you get the narrative, you get the narrative of, hey, it's been eight months, or it's been six months. And what what sometimes is inadvertently left out or sometimes conveniently left out of that story is, yeah, but really, the city only had it for twenty days. You know, the other period of time was between your contractor, your designer, things like that. So there's usually the other side of the story that we sometimes we often don't feel like we get to tell because when we go and look at it, we're like, okay, we gave you comments and you didn't respond. It's not always the case, but but I felt like that was something that may put it in context.
Yeah, that's a big one. Yeah. First off, just something that was said I want city manager to address.
So as the complaints come to council members, we respectfully ask that you forward it through your management analyst and your policy analyst so that we can channel it to Karen. Because typically how everybody is so hyper-focused on customer service, and they're going to respond to you all immediately. So that might push somebody in the queue that is complaining. So again, if you'll just work it through your policy analyst, we'll make sure that we get him handled for you.
Yes.
Councilmember Melton?
I assumed as much. Thank you. One thing is, I think you've heard, we we get a lot of this, I would say, often. And you guys are doing such good work that I'm wondering if there's a way to put on the website or on this department to some of the initiatives that you're working on or some of the streamlining so that when folks say what's being done to address the customer service, the permitting, we can say, go go to this part of the website, and you can see everything that they've done or they're trying out, and maybe even here's where to submit feedback. I think that might be really helpful because talking about telling the story, that made me think of it.
No, I appreciate that. And it's something that sometimes, and Suzanne Harris from the Home Builders Association, she's been great because she says, give me the info and I'll push it out. And so she's a great partner, but sometimes I forget, like, oh, this is a good thing that we're doing. And so I don't say it because I'm like, oh, we're just fixing a problem. So that's great feedback.
Councilmember Knight, then Branch.
Thank you. And I guess I'll preface this with, I have a lot of the same sort of contextualizing the complaints that we hear. I think that's been helpful. I think it was a great presentation. It was broad and showed us the different pieces. So that's very helpful. So I got a few specific questions, but I think y'all have seen some of the complaints that I forwarded. And, you know, mine are mostly from from professionals. And so in this last one that I forwarded was, you know, it was pretty detailed. So so it gave me some pause and some current concern. And so I'm glad that y'all are, you know, you're seem to be hyper-aware of this and sensitive to it. And I think there is a transition and change that's still going on. So I look forward to y'all to continue to work for that. You may want to comment on that before I move to specific questions.
Yeah, Brittany and I were talking about this earlier. One of the there's two main areas that are highly regulated that are very difficult. Stormwater and zoning. No one wants to hear no, right? We all want to hear yes. But what I find often with those issues where it's they're not helping me, they're not being agreeable, they're not doing it's because we're telling them that what they are putting forward, the way they are putting it forward, is not allowed. And especially with stormwater, I find myself defending them all the time because it's like they this is a federal thing. They cannot look the other way on this. And with zoning, it's the same thing. That's how the U D O says it. And just because you interpret it one way, our zoning administrator interprets it a whole different way. And so explaining that and trying to help them find a path forward is where we do spend a lot of time. And that's where they get frustrated because it ultimately comes down to, we're not saying yes to what they want.
Okay, thank you for that. A few questions specific, your call volume. What percentage would you say that's from professionals and it's and it's from, you know, somebody that needs or wants their back deck fixed?
Most of that volume that you're going to see there is going to be from, it's going to be office staff. It's going to be administrative staff. It's going to be builders, you know, who are calling in for inspections, that kind of thing. The bulk of the professional communication we get is going to start with an email. There's not as many phone calls with engineers and design team. They want an email, and then they say, hey, let's talk whenever you're available.
So I mean, so the permitting process, is every step of it online or or
Not not every step of it. There is still, well, yes and no, because they still have to email us, right? So that's but but as far as the steps to go through, it is online. And those who the more of the engineering firms and design firms that we work with on a regular basis, they know, they know exactly what they need to do, and they're like this about it. It's more people who are building here for the first time that they're going to struggle a little bit, and so we're trying to spend a little bit more time there.
Okay, just a just a simple housing process, grading, building. Does one person stay with you, you know, you as a home builder through that whole process? Or do they hand it off based on the permit that's needed next?
Do you mean like?
Like a staff, like a customer service, a staff person that keeps up with the with with where you are in the permitting process, whatever the permit be at the time to
In other words, an assigned staff member.
Yeah, that stays with you. They're not the 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 expert, but they are staying with you through the process.
We try to have the same staff in my group who are our intake staff, our permitting advocates, stay with it as it comes through. What I would ideally like to have is for them to be more what we call a coordinator role, where they become more proactive, and they're looking and saying whose reviews are late or what do they need to submit the next time, that kind of thing. But because of the volume being where it is, they're not as they're not looking at it holistically. They're just more transactional right now. And the same, we do try to have the same reviewers look at the same projects as well so that if 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 you're on your fourth review, it's the same reviewer, so you don't have to start all over.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate all of that. You know, I think maybe, you know, a report back in some form in six months to see how this process is going, I think, would be helpful, too. And that just helps us relay this to the public, especially from the professional side of
Absolutely.
Development. Thank you.
Councilmember Branch?
I was sitting here thinking, and I know how we've done, some of us have done a walk through our districts. I'm thinking this may be a good example of a walkthrough planning, putting some type of video or something together that shows the steps and shows the department and is out there, and it'll help educate the community and everyone on how to go forward. So I wanted to put that out there, and that'll help. Some of the questions that come to us, we can say, hey, here's a link, here's a video. That can also be helpful as as people go through and learn about city government.
Even this work session.
You just made Katie's day. She like the smile is going to be, she'll be beaming for the rest of the week. Like, I got a project. Yay.
I don't know how it all works, but somehow it gets to Damian.
Coordination.
Yes. So
Thank you. One one more question. And I'm not sure this for you, it strikes me as maybe more of a management level. But I'm I'm interested in talking about staffing. I I see a lot of vacancies in it.
I, I see a lot of vacancies and it, I, I think that this department is a little bit unique in that when, you know, when the boom time comes, there's, there's an incredible demand for this city service. And then when, when the economy is not roaring and people are not building, there's, you know, there's a strong drop-off. We, we saw that in 2009 and 10, right? So how, how do we plan for staffing in agency like this where we're, we're always lagging behind what's happening around us, right? Which is like, not meant to be a criticism, just an observation. And, and maybe that's not an accurate one, but, but that's kind of my sense. So like, how do we, how do we smooth out the, the waves that, that come in as far as staffing? And how are we looking ahead to make sure that, you know, if, if the, if the good times stop rolling, we don't have too many people? You, you, you got the, I mean, you, you know the challenge. Can you, can you just talk to us a little bit about how we staff this group?
Yeah, I do think part of this effort has, was highlighted in terms of some of the cross-training that has happened, particularly in some of those more generalized intake. I think where that gets more challenged are some of the very highly skilled review and inspection functions where there's a lot of state requirements in terms of what it takes to be certified and recognized in those efforts. And so those are some of the places where it's a longer lead time. Some of the things that didn't get covered today is we have curated programs with like ECU to be able to have some apprenticeship kinds of opportunities to come in. I don't know, we could do some more long-term analysis in terms of workloads, in terms of drop-offs. I don't think that we have, Raleigh has been pretty consistent in terms of some of that workload that has maybe shift between residential demand and commercial demand. I think what you've heard from all of the staff is trying to have more flexible staff that can shift between commercial and residential workload as there are shifts across those, those markets. I think we, I don't know that we've had challenges here as much as other markets in needing to reduce staffing. As workloads have fallen, I think our biggest challenge has been being able to respond when workloads have increased and to develop what are really technical skillsets in the market. So I think, you know, we did talk about some of the cross-training and work to build certifications. I think we're continuing to try to identify those partners in the community and within the academic realm that can try to accelerate or retrain people to come to be, particularly those reviewers and inspectors are the most challenging from a recruitment perspective.
Any other questions?
Okay, I just want to make a comment. Karen, I think you said this, that this was a culture change. And I can tell you, having been on the council from 2007, this is a huge culture change. And I want to commend you all for, like, just something as simple as permitting advocates changes the whole tone. And I think what you've done is really put the customer first. And I will tell you, I get very few complaints now. I used to get a lot. And y'all have made a difference. So I just want to say thank you for your work. Thank you for your creative thinking. Thank you for being diplomatic and thank you for finding a way to say yes instead of just saying no. So thank you. And with that, we will end on that note. Thank you.